Welcome. Call to order at 9:06 PM. Our joint special plan development workshop with the city council and planning zoning commission for April 19th, 2021 will move. We roll call all members of the city council are present. Member Kamkar is online virtual. All other members are in person. Madam Chair, would you call your role?
Mayor, all commissioners are are here. All our commissioners are present. We have a call. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, staff, give an introduction of the agenda and format of the workshop.
Yes, sir. I thank you, Mayor. For tonight's meeting, we'll have a call to order followed by a staff report, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present their workshop. And then we'll have council, commission, and staff discussion followed by an adjournment. Up for tonight's discussion, we'll have input on a proposed plan development for a multifamily development located on the north side of Magnolia Parkway, west of Manville Road. Back to you, Mayor.
All right, moving forward. Purpose of our workshop, input and discussion, a request by Jennifer Evans, Signature Companies applicant on behalf of Jockel Partnership Limited, owner for a joint workshop regarding a proposed plan development for multifamily development consisting of 304 apartment units on approximately 15 acres of land within the office professional district, generally located on the north side of Magnolia Parkway, west of Mambo Road. Move forward to applicant, was it staff presentation?
Let's let the.
Gonna give her presentation first?
Yeah, let's let the applicant go first.
Ms. Jennifer, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm sorry that we're we're keeping you, but I want you to know that I'm really excited to be here. I've waited a year with COVID and with all the different things, but we are excited to have a conversation with you tonight. And that's really what the goal is, is to just have an open, candid conversation and get a perspective of whether or not council would consider a multifamily component at this intersection. Back in 2006, Signature Companies through partnerships acquired the 40 acres to the west of the intersection. And since then, aside from a financial fallout and pandemics and all of that, we've been able to secure some national credit at the corners. They've developed as you would expect. We've had numerous conversations, site plans, meetings with various sized developers to look at co-development opportunities, really a big vision for the intersection. And the recurring stumbling block has been been traffic, traffic count. So after 7/11 opened their doors, we decided to go out and just kind of look in the Houston metroplex area at at similar type corridors, intersections. I mean, it didn't feel like we had to reinvent the wheel here. You get, you know, a national credit pharmacy, you get a national credit convenience store with a branded gas. You you kind of think that you can see the pattern of retail that will follow. And one of the components that we saw was a multifamily piece, which we would expect would make sense because it would drive retail. Retail drives traffic. So we met with Doak and his group with the Brownstone Group. They are familiar with Pearland, have done projects in Pearland, and said, will you take a bit of a deep dive with us and look at this intersection with us? Let us know what you think. Would it be a good site for a multifamily project? And if so, would you come alongside us and help us create the vision and bring it to council and have a conversation with them about it? So that's really what we're here for tonight. And we, like I said, we we really want to hear your comments so that if we leave here thinking that it is something that you would consider, that we come back in a formal manner addressing the concerns and the considerations that you offer up to us tonight. So thank you for staying late, and I hope you're not tired because, like I said, I'm really excited to hear what you have to say. So thank you. I guess I'll go ahead and turn it over to Doak and let you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Doak Brown. I'm with the Brownstone Group. As Jennifer said, we've done other developments in the city of Pearland. It's been several years since we've, can y'all hear me all right?
There you go.
It's been several years since, well, about a year since we've we've built anything in Pearland. But we're excited about this possibility. And I guess let me just kind of jump into some of the more specifics that we're we're talking about on this, the specific development. It will be a five-story development. It will be, it will have a unit mix of approximately 148 one-bedroom units, 134 two-bedroom units, and about 22 three-bedroom units. And these are just approximate unit mixes right now that we're that we're dealing with. We'll have to tune that up as we get a little bit further down the road. As you can see, we've laid out the the building based upon just general comments we've received from staff with regard to trying to hide the parking behind the building as opposed to having the parking out in front of the building. And we've we've placed the the detention area there on the west side of the property. That is the property that abuts the the single-family neighborhood there. To the north of the property, it is, it's not, it's not Pearland proper. So we we have obviously proposed using concrete or or some type of fencing going around the entire property that does not allow visibility through. We are in the in the courtyard there. Obviously, we would have a, the courtyard being the the front of the the building. We would have a pool area. Trying to think, and there would be a dog park on the far, the far east side of the property in the little triangle space there. That's really the the specifics that we've come up with at this point. And, you know, happy to answer any types of questions that you have. We may end up doing some some covered parking in addition to the garages that you see shown on on that that property. The that will, that will most likely be added in as we we get further into this development. The, just to give you all an idea of what type of rents we're talking about with this particular product, it would definitely be on on some of the higher side of of Pearland. The average rents we're currently running are about a buck fifty-six a foot. I think that would put it up near, I think, the only project that currently has rents higher than that would be the the multifamily development in Pearland Town Center. It, I believe, is in the 160s. So it's it's definitely on the on the higher side of 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 rent per square foot that we would need to obtain on this particular development. Anything else you think you might add in there?
The only other thing that I'd add is really, I I have a rendering that I can pass out about with, that we did on the south side of the street. The south side, 20, let me think about that, 15, I guess we've got about 23 acres on the south side of the street, and that's all zone GB. Now, what we've land planned for that is on the far west end, there's a little bit of open space area that could be dedicated as a park. And then we would probably transition into some sort of office use, office condo, an office professional type of use, and then transitioning on into the retail. You know, kind of an interesting climate in retail right now. But we would, you know, I would, I would certainly think, we've certainly discussed that, you know, a rooftop component like this would drive your typical, you know, we would hope that we would see a little bit of restaurant, we would see maybe a regional size grocer. The site, because of the detention requirements, has shrunk over the years. And so we can't get the full-size HEB like you have at Pearland Parkway. Another thing to note is, we have, and we hope that we continue to move towards opportunities that bring up, bring the vision that council had when they, when the roadway, the corridor was approved. We have turned down, we actually turned down HEB for their Joe V's concept there because that's not what we want, and that's not our vision when we bring this piece. I mean, it is really to bring something to this, you know, the old mayor, the old mayor, the Mayor Reed, previous Mayor Reed, I don't even know how you say that right, sorry. You, he referred to this as the belt buckle of the city. And we thought in that moment that that was really good, and that was going to really serve us well. But what we found is that Pearland Parkway developed out, Shadow Creek developed out, but this this little quadrant area has been a little harder. And you feel like if this is done well, this can be another little, let's call it a district area, that, you know, can be a nice, a nice add to this southern entrance, I might say, into Pearland. So I guess that's all.
Does that conclude for now?
Yes.
All right. Does staff have a anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a quick presentation to go over some of the specifics. Mohammed, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Mayor. So the purpose of this workshop is really to just discuss and get feedback on this proposal for the creation of a planned development district for multifamily development consisting, as the applicant mentioned, 304 apartment units on approximately 15 acres of land, generally located, currently zone office professional district, and generally located on the north side of Magnolia Parkway, west of, west of Manville Road. The next slide is the zoning and aerial map that shows the general location for this particular site. As you can see, that triangular side is the OP district. That's the subject site. The southern one is General Business. It's also owned by the same entity. These two sites were rezoned to OP and General Business back in 2008. And with a conditional use permit for a hospital on the OP side, that hasn't happened. So the site is is still currently undeveloped. The property is the the one that we were looking at with the red boundary on this slide is abutted by a what appears to be residential homes on the north side, which are outside the city limits. It's in the Pearland extraterritorial jurisdiction. And on the south side by this undeveloped track as well as that convenient store with the gas station that was recently built at the corner of Magnolia Parkway and Mambo Road. On the west side, it is abutted by the single-family homes. It's part of Pearland, and it's zoned for a single-family residential number four. The next slide is the future land use plan for this area, and it shows the property as designated as low density. The next slide I have, or slides are presented by the applicant, this one is gonna show us the highlights of the features of this proposed development, as mentioned, is three or four apartment units with residential density of roughly about 20 units per acre. The proposed development features several amenities, including two-story fitness center, swimming pool, clubhouse, dock park, meditized detention pond, and walking trails, as the applicant has indicated that. And the facade renderings in the next slide shows, actually, this is the proposed site plan, and then we have the slides, we have the the facade elevation that shows articulation and architectural tower features at the corners of the building. And the last slide, I think it's the the rendering. The next slide I have is exhibit that shows current zoning regulations of the multifamily. Generally, when they were designed, were designed mainly to accommodate merely garden-style type of apartment buildings with a maximum height of only two stories and maximum density of 16 units per acre. So this is kind of a comparison between this development and the multifamily district. Multifamily would allow 16 units per acre. This development would allow for 20 units per acre. Max, maximum height for the multifamily is only 35 feet in height. This would go up to 62 feet to the top of the parapet wall. And then the last, but not least, open space. And so per the current MF regulations, opening space would be 900 square feet per unit, which comes up to about 273,000 square feet of open space. The applicant would provide about two-thirds of that, or maybe almost just a little bit over half of that. And then parking regulations, obviously abundant of parking with the multifamily zoning regulations. The applicant proposes 1.3 spaces for one-bedroom apartment, 1.667 space for two-bedroom, and and two spaces for three-bedroom units. I think I have another slide, Mark, after that. And I think this is the one that Jennifer was talking about, the applicant was talking about a few minutes ago. This would allow for the incorporation of the north side with the south side, the multifamily being on the north side, and development of office condos and retail on the south side that would create a thematic district. So I'll let the applicant talk about that, but I think that concludes the staff report.
Okay. That concludes staff report. I guess we will turn now to questions. I'd like to turn it to the planning and zoning first.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm gonna just, in the interest of time, issue a blanket. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for them?
This is Commissioner Hendricks. I really like the idea of this and adding more office and retail and services to the area. My only thing is that I would just like to maybe possibly see how would this development of apartments affect our local schools, in particular our element, and need to overcrowd the school? Do we have the room for the additional kids? I would just like involvement of the school district in this to make sure we're not causing a problem with with our schools being overcrowded from this development. And that's all I have comment on.
If you can ask for the next person, I'll be next. This is Commissioner Fuentes. I'm struggling with this. Location is everything, and and I don't think because, because a hospital, if I remember correctly, this was Mike Pollack's land before and in the commission and council passed. I thought it was a CUP, and maybe it was a zone change, but it was for a hospital or medical use. And we're gonna go from medical use to a to multifamily in an area that, you know, isn't typically, or to me, a street like Pearland Parkway, I'm sorry, Magnolia, isn't multifamily friendly. There's not other multifamilies, you know, the the neighborhood and the area wasn't planned for a multifamily, I think for a reason. I I think it's a nice, I think they've done what they could with it from a rendition standpoint, but I just, I think location is everything. And when I was asked to consider being on planning and zoning, I I my comments were that I'd like to see more planning and less, or this, the P and Z to be more planners. And if you took the the blank map of, or a map of Pearland and said, here's the parcels that we have remaining, find a use for them. I don't believe I would have selected multifamily for this piece. I think there's a lot of other parcels if we're going to go with more multifamily, which has not been our historic past. I don't think this piece would have been one of the top 10 I would have considered. And and I don't mean to sound too negative, but I thought they did a great presentation, but that's just the, it is what it is.
Can I speak to, in this setting, or do I need to? Can I reply to?
We really, this is really a workshop, not a public hearing. Go ahead. Did you have something to address?
I just wanted to clarify that Mike Pollack is still involved. He's my business partner, so he's still involved in this endeavor. And at the time that we came to the city for the hospital CUP, we did it alongside Kelsey Sebo, because that's when they were in, out in the market looking for where they were gonna expand their facilities down here. So as we see, we did not succeed with them. But I I appreciate your comments, and and I certainly would love to dialogue, because gosh, now, we've been doing it for a number of years, you know, what is it that that'll drive the retail? Because this is a retail node, and, you know, how do we do that? And we're just here tonight, all ears, appreciate your your comments and your perspective. Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, anybody else?
Yes, this is Commissioner Boswell. I will say to the point of what we've received tonight in this workshop, I can't say that because of what Pearland was in the past that that's what it is now. I think that it's it's changing, it's growing, and I think you have to take into consideration what other people are gonna want coming into the city. And that's not necessarily going to be what it's always been for Pearland. And so I guess my comment is, I would just ask commissioners as well as council to be open to what Pearland could be versus what it's always been. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Eisenberg. You know, I would, I would like to get, you know, I'd like to hear the the input from the people that live out in that in that area and stuff. I know that apartment complexes in the past have been frowned upon, you know, whether it's it's the future or whatever, but but I I just don't see, I mean, I, townhomes, stuff like that, there, there's, you know, there's been some guidelines that people have have leaned towards some of the townhomes because they're being purchased, but the apartments is something that that they've they've frowned on. And and there's a lot of concessions to be considered here. I mean, we've got a 35-foot building height, and here we're going to 60, over 60 feet. And, you know, I I think it's a really nice building. I think it's a nice project and stuff, but I, you know, I just, I I wonder what the citizens want as far as living out there and stuff. And and and, you know, it's, I think Commissioner Fuentes brought it up that that, you know, it's not, you know, it's it's not a, unfortunately, a multifamily is not something that a lot of people get excited about being built around them. And but, you know, you know, it's just, it's gonna, in my own personal view, I think it's an uphill battle. And, I mean, maybe the the city council looks at it a little bit differently and stuff. You know, maybe, you know, maybe it's time that we do look at our height requirements and stuff, but I'm just wondering if this is the the place that we want to do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Boswell, once again, I'm just speaking from a single woman with no kids. Like, I'm, I'd want us to look at different perspectives for different age groups, for different diversity. So I totally understand what you're saying, but this type of facility was exciting to me because I think I said when I interviewed for planning and zoning, I would be interested in seeing high, higher buildings and and units that would be present within Pearland. So again, I think just different perspectives, but I'm definitely open to seeing new things come into Pearland versus what it's always been. Thank you.
You know, for the most part, well, you know, I enjoy the the growth of Pearland, you know, in income of businesses coming in, that kind of thing, that kind of said. Multifamily is gonna always be an uphill battle in Pearland. I worry about the height of this, the scope of this, the size of it. The rents are gonna be on the high end. As it was mentioned, it's the second highest in in the city, if that's the case. You know, I'd I'd want to see a feasibility analysis, market analysis of of its ability, because typically, you know, you start off at a number, and and the demand is not there, and that number comes down, and it turns into something else. Five-story frankly scares scares me a little bit. It'll be the tallest, you know, I would imagine, or one of the tallest around many, many miles. I'm worried that this node is ahead of the curve. I don't know that it's there yet, that it would be nice if it was there, if there was other areas or growth that would come to that area, other businesses, you know, maybe this is the catalyst, maybe it's not. But, you know, I I worry a little bit about the future of that, that quality of a product on that location, just in general. I need a little more info going forward. Thanks.
Commissioner Earls?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Time and timing and and location. I think this was designed a while ago. It is a massive, I hope massive doesn't sound negative, but it is a massive development. The office spaces concern me. This is post-COVID, or almost post-COVID. Companies are closing, small businesses are closing. They will come back to some degree. I forgot the number of office space, did seem like a lot. Again, it's five stories. We need growth, but again, this might be ahead of the curve, and it does concern me some. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, we'll throw it to council for input discussion.
This is something I've said before, and I'll continue to say it. We have three revenue levers up here, and that that's it. We can raise the tax rate on people. We can. We can cut spending on services that they desperately need and ask for more of. Or we can increase the value that that tax rate that we can hopefully keep the same or lower is applied to. Um, so I I'm under no illusions of of how people in in this room and how many people in this community perceive multifamily. But I I'm also just saying, I I think there has to be an entire paradigm shift of it's not reasonable to say that you want to spend more money on stuff that people want and to lower the tax rate and you're never gonna approve any ambitious development. That's that's just a fantasy world. And so we have to be um just acknowledge what what our options are and what our levers are. And and at least from my perspective, and I would guess from many other people's perspective, the least painful of the options of cutting, spending, raising taxes uh and allowing more ambitious development, uh the the one, the one that I am most partial to is allowing more ambitious development. So um, understand people's concerns around stuff like this, but just generally, just e- especially to the talk of the the height requirements, whether for this project or for any other ones. I'm like, yeah, let's have higher building. I mean, if we can get, if we can go higher up on dirt and get more value out of that, that's, those are the conversations we're going to increasingly have to have if we ever wanna put a dent in these other conversations we have, like, why can't we maintain our streets? Why can't we maintain our sidewalks? How are we gonna do that for the water facility that we're doing? So I I'm gonna listen to hear what everyone else has to say on this project, but just as a general thing, these conversations we have are not these isolated things. They're all connected. And our decisions on something like this affect the resources we have down the line when we're talking about if we can give a performance raise on top of a COLA or not. I mean, that it it's all connected. And so I just think my perspective is let's, let's, regardless of this individual project, let's have the mindset of we want to encourage more ambitious, valuable zoning and and take the burden off of people living in single-family homes who are right now paying a way higher rate than they have to in other communities that have more ambitious stuff like this. Sugar Land, you know, uh McKinney, Frisco, these other peer communities that we have. They offload a lot of that tax burden on a businesses, office parks, multifamily, and their citizens are better off for it. So I think we could learn something from that.
Uh, yeah, I just a few comments. I'm looking at um where your detention pond and activity field are. Um, those are obviously two different areas, right? You're not gonna have the activity field, the detention pond in the same area.
Yeah, we would like to use the detention area, uh make it a grassy area where it's not gonna be wet. That's not our intent.
Can you pull your mic up a little bit?
It it's not our intent. I mean, it is our intent to have the activity area and the detention area as well. Um, and have it be a grassy field. Yeah, we'll have to have some areas that are probably lower than others that have, you know, that obviously there's gonna be water uh in in some areas of it, but it, we don't wanna have the whole, the whole space uh be unusable. We'd rather it be, you know, a grassy area.
Okay, um. You know, I think as you get further into this project, you're gonna get some pushback from the neighborhood to the west. Uh, it always happens in multifamily units, uh like the way you've kinda put the detention pond, activity field as a buffer to that neighborhood and your parking lot as a buffer to the residences on the north. Um, it's like some of the residents would be parking quite a distance from where their unit is. Um, and I don't see how that's gonna work if, you know, they come home and there's a, you know, one of these Texas deluges that we get. Um, that's that's kind of an odd thing. I I I do like the design of it. I don't have a problem with the with the five stories. Um, and I like what Councilman Orlando said about ambitious projects generating uh more more tax revenue per per square foot of of land that it's taking up.
Would you be opposed if we if we had parking going around the building? Obviously, I I I'm sure, I'm sure most of y'all y'all recognize uh structured parking would be ideal here. But the question is, can we afford to build that uh and and get the rent that we need? Because it's gonna, it would ha- it would jack up the cost even more, meaning we we would need to get a higher rent. Uh, and and that is sometimes difficult uh sell to lenders and investors. Uh, so to be the highest rent in Pearland at this particular location, while I don't mind being close to the top, uh, I I I think that um structured parking uh may be a difficult sell um to get those rents that I would need to to justify that. I would rather have the parking uh going around the building. But if that's not something that you all would consider, uh then I need to look at the next best option.
I understand.
That's what I have.
Well, the parking's not gonna be a game changer for me. I was just pointing that out. It might be a deterrent to some residences, but that's all I have for now.
Uh, yeah, let me try and go through some things quick. Uh, one, I would just say, look, let's let's try not to be, pretend we're we're something that we're not. We're not market experts. We don't know what office is gonna do. Nobody really knows what office is gonna do. It's a lot of speculation. So I I I don't think, you know, what we think might happen should be a prohibition against what we should allow to happen when people are willing to invest in in Pearland. I have had in the past spoken out against a multifamily, not that I've ever really had anything against it, but um that, you know, there was plenty of people when I first got elected that that were opposed to it. But I think that attitude has changed. Um, I am actually trying to, and this is on the onset of a discussion I wanna have um uh later on with other, the other council members. But d- density is the way we have to go now in order for us to be able to continue to keep Pearland to the quality we want. We don't have any large tracts where we can do another Shadow Creek, we can do another Lakes of Highland Glen. Um, even when McCard comes through, we're just not gonna open up with a whole lot of additional land. Uh, and our retail developments are starving. Uh, we have a lot of empty retail space because we don't have an, we don't have the residents to feed it. Um, and we continue to talk about all the other development we want to attract in Pearland. But right now, we've gotten what we've got because we have what we have. Uh, we're not gonna get much more of um uh low density, we're getting no more low-density residential. We might get some more high-density residential, but it's gonna be twenty to thirty acres at a time, which is gonna take till my grandkids have grandkids to fill out. Uh, so it's, i- i- if we want to allow or Pearland to prosper, density is really our option. And we've bended a lot on things that we have um uh we have typically been against, you know. I was stunned that townhomes sold in Pearland, but Baker's Landing, they sold out before they could even put the first brick on the first house. Um, I mean, clearly, that's what our citizenry is asking for. Um, so I'm gonna tell you, holistically, I'm okay with the use. Um, I would prefer that we not do this PD one side of the street at a time. I think that what we could solve two problems at once. We do the whole PD at once. We move the detention to one side because if you're gonna get this development, um, I think we don't wanna, I I've spoken out against and I'm not gonna be supportive of a PD which is I just want my own prescriptive zone and offering nothing in return. It should be a negotiation. Um, a lot of what you've put in your PD amendment is here's all the things in multifamily that we just don't wanna do or can't do or can't afford to do. And regardless of your motivation, I can't support just using the PD as a document to prevent you from having to adhere to the criteria if we just did a zone change to multifamily. Um, I don't want to do the zone change to multifamily because I want to be able to allow this development, both sides, to develop holistically. And I think that's our best path. Um, I hope some of the other council members agree with me. We can't underpark a multifamily. There's nowhere to put them. So um, I think that in order for you to keep the density that you may think you need to make this development, you need more developable land. Um, so perhaps if we did the PD holistically and we allowed you to take the water from one side of the street to the other and then that you have one outfall into Mary's Creek, that could be a compromise. Um, if that's something that y'all are willing to consider. If not, if you wanna do these or if you can only do this one side at a time, then I would say we need to have an ongoing discussion with staff about what of the, we'll start off with a PD with a base zoning to multifamily and then you come back to us and say, here are the things I can't bend. I need this density, I need this height. But we can't just wipe out everything and say, just give me everything that I want because that's the only way to make it work. I mean, that, we would be disingenuous to our zoning criteria if we did, if we allowed that. So I want you to move forward. I want the project to happen. I'm certainly supportive of it. Um, I don't wanna be nebulous in our instruction, but I think we're gonna need more workshops to make this work. I would really like y'all to see, to do the PD on both sides and do the development on both sides. And that way we can, what can be taken on one side can be given to the other, perhaps. I think that will give you more options. Um, but I do, I would say to my other council members, like, we're not, we're not gonna solve this tonight. Even if we were here till three or four in the morning, we're just gonna, we're just gonna go through a number of options and we're gonna have, we're gonna opine a lot and we're just gonna fuse them out, uh, but I think if maybe we've had three members, if there's another member that says, yes, I'm okay with the use, but we've gotta continue to workshop it. Um, and maybe provide some loose direction and put y'all on a path. Um, we can continue to workshop it and get this PD through. Um, I think maybe if the other uh members would like to um offer some thought of whether they wanna do this one side of the street at uh uh at a time or both at the same time, that may also give you some direction. Um, but I'd like to see something like this move forward, maybe not as aggressive as you've got, uh but I think where there's some compromise here. All I have, ma'am.
You could just say ditto.
Councilmember?
Yeah, in terms of of both sides of the street or phasing, I mean, every time we see one of these, they'll give us phases, but they're gonna want residential first because that's where the money's at. So we're gonna run into phasing issues. I'm fine either way. Um, I guess the big issue that I see is to the north. Um, well, it's gonna be a nice view from the the fifth story looking north. I mean, that's ETJ for a reason. Um, it's not in the city limits. I I'm more concerned about the folks right there on the west side. Um, so if we do move drainage or detention to the south side, then we need some sort of buffer there. Um, out in the parking lot, are those like standalone garages?
Yes.
Okay, I wouldn't, I don't know how it would work and I'm not trying to pretend like I can design anything, but if there was a row of garages that abutted the west side um to help buffer some of the neighbors, then maybe that 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 would help out or 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 something, but I think that's the biggest pushback goes truthfully to the you're not gonna get any pushback to the north or the south. And so um, we've gotta make, if if multifamily's gonna go there, we need to 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 be very cognizant of those, the property owners to the west. I agree, if you you look at the the top taxpayers, top ten in the city, it's what, eight of the ten or seven of the ten are on multifamily. Um, and so, yeah, I I like getting the value on the ground, um as long as it's compatible um with the 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 neighbors to the west. So I I still think we got a big, a big uphill battle. Um, and at some point, we're gonna hear from the residents of being when do you wanna reach out to them and do you wanna reach out or you wanna wait till they're here in the audience with pitchforks?
I'll say that one thing that Mike and I have done over the years is we like to kinda uh just dive into the problems and we like to be on the offense and not the defense. And so I would expect that um we would have some sort of um opportunity to dialogue with them, whether we went to the neighborhood or we did, we would, we would do something to engage the neighborhood before the meeting. If I can also speak to, I'm very happy to hear that um the option is there for us to workshop this for a while because um I I there is, there is a lot to un- to kinda unravel and dig into and um look at holistically. And um, we're, that's music to my ear. If we can just continue the dialogue and there's a sense that we could all wanna get to the same place, that that's great. Thank you.
And I guess in terms of the parking, um I I like staff, having you push the building up front. I mean, that's gonna look so much better as as we drive east and west on Magnolia. I mean, I I I get that and I think that looks like a a better finished product, but we can talk about that more in the future.
Councilmember Kamkar, I think you're unmuted, but you're not showing on my screen.
No, yeah, I am.
There you go.
Yeah, uh, first of all, thank you to the team for putting this together. Um, I I saw this on the packet and and I had questions and and as I've dug in, uh, the questions have not gotten less. Um, I'll I'll just, I'll kinda clear the air here. I I kind of agree with Commissioner Heinrichs. Uh, there there's implications for the school. Um, those schools are for the most part set. I don't know how many portables they have, but or how many they would have to build. Um, but that's obviously a concern here. We've got three hundred plus units. Uh, let's assume uh every one of those units uh is a kid, maybe two kids. Um, that's another two to three hundred kids um into a school that may not have that capacity. Um, that's not my concern, but that will eventually come up and and it will go to the ISB and then it'll come to us. Um, so if you get a resolution of support from the school district, uh saying that they're supportive of this, I probably just shut up and be done with it, but I I'm very dubious that that will happen. Um, the areas that I have concern are 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 there's basically cheating at every major item. We're twenty-five percent more dense. Uh, the standard is sixteen units to the acre. You guys are twenty on open space. You guys are cheating again at essentially seventy-five percent of green space with a hundred and fifty thousand square feet being this park, which is a dry bottom detention pond. As a development professional, um what's gonna happen is you're gonna put a goalpost at either end and call it a park. Um, that doesn't work for me. Um, and as member Perez pointed out earlier on, um, we're gonna be tasked to putting parking rep facilities and then around here. Um, and there's just not a lot of space to go and do that. Um, second, uh, the the walkability is member Orlando, we we talk about this a lot. Um, there's not a whole lot there. There there are the major right-of-way. Um, I don't see a crossing the street. I don't feel comfortable putting citizens uh across a major right-of-way, especially around eight or nine in the morning and at four or five in the afternoon. Um, that's just not where I'm gonna get to, most likely. Um, on the parking, um, this is a ton of parking on here and you're still only at two-thirds of the standard, um as written up in this write-up. So there's just a lot of areas where we're just, where we're blatantly cheating or very close to cheating. Um, and and so I, we're gonna need a lot, we we could do four more workshops and even then, it's still gonna probably be a four-three vote one way or the other, I have a feeling. Um, so I I don't wanna waste anybody's time here, but we've gotta address these major issues before I'll get anywhere close to considering this.
All right, uh, I do have a couple of things to add that might help you in your journey. Um, Mr. Brownstone, it it would, it would probably uh be a good benefit to know from your uh, from your background, your portfolio, um, how many children go to ISDs out of your portfolio? My experience in multifamily, uh, one in in uh two-bedroom apartments uh don't produce near as many children into the ISDs that people think.
That's, that's e- exactly. Yeah, so you know, here we have almost fifty percent of the units are one-bedroom units. Those tend to not have anybody uh going, going, uh, participating in the school district.
And but there may be, there there may be a need to have a little bit more documented
Sure.
on how that, on how that works.
No, understand.
I mean, there's no four bedrooms in here. There's a seven percent is three bedrooms. You're limiting that. I think it it it, what you're hearing is there's a little bit of uh pushback on the mix, the number of units. And understand that that's all that 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 all goes in the blender and I and I understand what comes out on the other end. You're trying to blend that in to get where you need to be. I get that. Um, I do like the fact that it's pushed out onto the roadway. It will look impressive along the roadway and I think it's meant to do that. And I'm I'm glad uh you've worked with staff to do that. If you're gonna engage the residents, and I would encourage you to reach out and and figure out that HOA or um uh people within that that, especially to the west, uh, set up something, engage them, get their questions, get their feedback, uh, listen through that. But I would also But I would also look, because of the height of this being five stories, especially in what that's going to look like and the fact that it's pushed away from the residents, I would get a rendering of that, what that looks like from the top and what that distance all the way back is. Most people are going to be thinking, you're looking straight over into my, into my backyard and you're 500 feet from their backyard and you're still not going to be able to see into it. So those are tools that will help you demonstrate that. I think that would be tools that would be helpful here, especially if you come back and we do wrap up a PD and those types of height. So you've, you've heard a little pushback on height. You've heard a little pushback on some of these types of things. I do like the detention being used as, as park open space along with it, not just a hole in the ground with a sidewalk around it and that's it. I mean, granite, there's going to be parts in time where it's going to be full of water. And generally speaking, that's not when kids are going to be out playing anyway. So generally speaking, I think that's a good mix to be able to have those types of things. I do agree. I mean, if you can, if you can use both sides of the road and you can move that detention around and use it for the overall development, I think that could be a good mix, a good feel. So I, those are some advice I would kick back is how you, I would demonstrate the ISD component. I think that that's always going to be a, a point of conflict or a point of concern. And if you've got, in fact, I asked somebody one day, I said, they probably ought to do a study of all of our apartment complexes and how many kids are actually in the ISD from each. Somebody needs to fund that study so we can once and for all figure that out. But those are some of my comments, just to help you along. I think we're here to help. This is a tough, I mean, the, the shape of the land doesn't lend it for a lot. I think having the overall scope of the 40-acre development, not just one side or the other, makes sense so we can understand. PDs can be amended. I mean, there's things that can happen in the marketplace. We get that. PDs have been amended before, so we can, we can, we can do that again if we need to. But I think, you know, this, and I would, I would encourage, I mean, this isn't garden-style apartments. This is a more of a mid-rise type of feel. I would, I would get that a little bit closer as to what that looks like so people can get that, get that in their minds of what that would be, not just your garden, garden-style apartment. So real quick, Councilmember Rowan, do you have something real quick?
Yeah. And, and you remember Kevin, earlier years when we served together, there was so much outrage on apartments that we took all vacant land and made it SD. So they would have to come in and redevelop, you know, to come in and do it. Having said that, you know, we've heard from the west side over there, people complaining about so many apartments coming in and, but that was all planned into that area. And apartments have been kept out from the east area over here for a period of time. Having said that, you know, certainly we've talked about being able to come in and look at more density in order to do what we need to do in this, on this side, in this area to do that, because we've got very little land left in there. But with this development here, I mean, you know, we kept it out for a while and then all of a sudden this five-story magnitude type thing coming in, you know, is, is, is going to really floor a lot of people if it goes through on there. But having said that, I've always done, you know, you and Mike have always done good of working with us here at the city in the past on other projects. I think, you know, maybe like it's been said on coming in and doing a other workshop on this and you've heard what's been said and let's take a look at it again. I think ultimately, you know, we're going to have to go to this, you know, or something like this on the density side of it. But, you know, it's all of a sudden we kept it out for a number of years and all of a sudden we dropped this 300 five-story units. I mean, it's the magnitude of it coming in and I mean, that, that, that's going to be a lot of concern and a lot of discussion. So we need to be, if we're going to do it, we need to look at it, make sure we know what we're doing when we do it. I think, you know, when we come back again, I think, you know, that's what we're probably going to have to do.
Do you have some direction?
Yes, thank you very much. And we'll take all these comments. We will absolutely come back with the overall intersection and, because we've taken a step in that direction. So we hear you and we appreciate all the comments.
Yeah, and definitely engaging the residents around there. I think anytime you can head off and be on offense, like you said, I think the better you're going to be. There's still going to be people against it. There's still going to be people with misconceptions about multifamily. But the more you're showing them to come and get their feedback, I think the better you're going to be. Staff, do you have any other comments, questions?
Staff's only wrap-up is that we're glad to hear that there is discussion about, including both the north and the south tract. You know, we've worked with Midtown at Magnolia to kind of create some styling. We ensured that the next property that got developed with the 7-Eleven kind of carried forward some of those styling points. And we'd love to see that the, the rest of this property that it's available to develop, you know, maintain some of those style cues and carries on that look and feel for this area.
That's a good point. So with that, no other comments, questions? We'll adjourn this workshop at 10:02.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Cade, if you'll give us a minute to switch the feed over for planning and zoning, we'll let you know when we're ready to go with that.